So I'm not feeling like.
Half sit up and then lift the lid.
Much better, I don't feel like an adult.
He won't get you a booster seat then.
All right, we're all set, you're live.
I'm hoping we're live. It's running. We've had some.
Yes.
I don't know if this. I don't see any sound coming up.
Well, that's good, because I just made a horrible noise.
Nope, it is. It's working.
Yep, it's working now.
Okay. All set?
All set.
All right, welcome to the Town of Milton Board of Selectmen meeting, today is November seventh, two thousand and twenty-two. Let's all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're gonna start off with public comments, any public comments?
I guess that would be me.
Sure, can you just come to the podium and state your name, please?
My name is Patricia Gubow, and I live just off of Governor's Road.
Hold on one second, look, I don't think the mic's on, or it's just. There we go.
Yeah, I live off of Governor's Road, and I had spoken to the road agent about maybe putting a yellow line in the middle of the road because it, twice now, when the weather's been bad, I've almost gone off the road, you can't tell where it is. They told me that the money had all been spent for paving or tarring, for painting the lines for this year. So I'm just coming tonight to see that you consider doing something about that because there's no sides that you, you know, if you're, if you go off of the road, you're in a debt. And it's very dangerous, I live a mile up the road and there's six big curves before I get there. I don't usually do this, but.
No, very valid, I agree, I live on Governor's Road, it is especially at night.
Yeah, I've talked to several people that have had, they complained about it too. So I filled out my own form, and I'm just dropping it off for your consideration for maybe next year, get in the line. I'd be happy with just the center line, so you can tell which side of the road you're on.
Okay, great, thank you so much, I can take that.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, do we have any other public comments?
Larry Brown, thirteen sixty-two White Mountain Highway, Milton. Couple of comments on constitutional issues. The New Hampshire Constitution dates from January fifth of seventeen seventy-six, six months before the Declaration of Independence. Interesting. When you take through both of them listening, you swear to defend the Constitution. When we take our civil vote, we agree to serve agreeably to the rules of the Constitution and support the Constitution of the United States of America and New Hampshire. Having said that, I'd like to point out that Johnny Carson's favorite joke involved Ed McMahon, who was down at Winter Garden doing the bikini water skiing event. And Johnny stayed home that weekend because he had to backwash his water ski. Wanted to advise you that October twenty-fifth, next Tuesday, at six P M., October twenty-fifth, next Tuesday, six P M. At the Rochester City Hall, there will be a candidate's night with the candidates for District Three, which is now fortified in Rochester and Milton. I see one raised eyebrow, which is funny because obviously there's sarcasm here. We each received notification that that event would happen. All three Republicans, like Johnny Carson, seem to have had to backwash their verdict. This bothers me because I will never find out what the oath of secession is for a state representative. And I will never find out what source eighty-five hundred dollars came from in dark money to our present city and state. Thank you, David.
Thank you, any other public comments? Okay, wonderful, let's move on. So we have announcements and community calendar. The state and federal election is tomorrow, November eighth, two thousand and twenty-two, you can register to vote on Election Day. The polls are at Newt High School and open at eight A M. and close at seven P M. Some town hall services will not be available tomorrow, such as administration, town clerk, and tax collector. The building inspector, land use, and assessing will be open until four P M. Town Hall will be closed to all business on November eleventh, two thousand and twenty-two, in observance of Veterans' Day. Town Hall will be closed on Wednesday, November sixteenth, for all-day training. On Saturday, November nineteenth, the New Hampshire Farm Museum will be holding their eighteen sixty-three Thanksgiving at the farm. There will be a holiday music in the parlor and a table will be set up in the Victorian parlor, which will be set as it was in eighteen sixty-three. Come meet Sarah Josepha Hale as she reads the letter she sent to President Abraham Lincoln requesting to establish the nationally proclaimed day of Thanksgiving. The blue Ford Explorer previously used by the police department and then the grounds and building department is up for sale by sealed bid. The bid documents can be obtained at Town Hall, Town Hall, or at the town website. Bids are scheduled to be opened at the Selectmen's Meeting on December fifth, two thousand and twenty-two. The town is accepting bids on the tax-dated property at fifty-seven Silver Street. Sealed bids are due on December fifth. The bid package can be found at the town website or picked up at Town Hall. The bids will be opened and read aloud at the board's meeting on December fifth. All right, new business, we have any, anything else for?
Just before we move, we want to make sure that we put that notification on the webpage about Town Hall on the sixteenth.
Yeah, I reminded Brittany earlier today.
Okay.
Okay. All right, moving on to new business, first item, appointment of Jonathan W. Newt to Stratford Regional Planning Commission.
Bring Jonathan forward.
Yep, I'm gonna step forward and do the oath.
Come on up here.
Sure. Okay.
Raise my hand.
Raise your right hand, here we go, I, Jonathan W. Newt.
I, Jonathan W. Newt.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully and impartially discharge.
That I will faithfully and impartially discharge.
And perform all the duties.
And perform all the duties.
Incumbent on me.
Incumbent upon me.
As representative to the Stratford Regional Planning Commission.
As representative to the Stratford Regional Planning Commission.
For the town of Milton, New Hampshire.
For the town of Milton, New Hampshire.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
Agreeably to the rules and regulations.
Agreeably to the rules and regulations.
Of the Constitution.
Of the Constitution.
And the laws of the state of New Hampshire.
And the laws of the state of New Hampshire.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Very good, congratulations.
Thanks very much. Thank you, Claudia, I appreciate it.
Sure, we're going to just sign a few things here.
Yep, before you sit, we're gonna have you sign this too.
Have a pen, so.
Can you stick them around, or?
Yeah, stick them around and we'll give it to you.
All right, we'll just have you sign first.
And then sign right here. And I'm gonna make sure where you're at here. Go ahead, personally appear the above name, yep. So you're gonna sign right here, there's, I mean, above your name here.
Okay. How's that?
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, folks, I appreciate it.
Thank you, and thank you for stepping up, not a lot of people are doing it.
Larry's stepping down after disagreeing his career, and I have the time, this and well, and they're just meeting in Rochester, so I can eat at Wendy's and go to the meeting and it'll work out.
There you go, perfect.
Thank you, folks, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Oh, you're gonna have to sign one more spot, too.
Oh, is that at the bottom? I see a different color. I'll just borrow yours, keep your seat. Yes. Okay, next item for new business, acknowledgement of Stratford County bill and the amount of one thousand four hundred fifty.
Nope.
I'm sorry, one million four hundred and fifty thousand, seven hundred and ninety-seven dollars. There weren't any other zeros, so I kinda got.
Correct. So Madam Chair, some, this is the same kind of notice that we received as last year, although this year they sent along a form where they want to note that you are aware that you've received it. The bill is still not due until December.
Fifteen, yep.
But for some reason, they want the town to acknowledge at least that they have received the bill. So, if you'd like to sign that.
Can we get a breakdown from them on what's being paid that's caused this to go up so much?
Sure, I can ask.
Because, I mean, for people at home to understand that this is two hundred and, was it two hundred and forty thousand dollar increase?
Right, last year the bill was one million two hundred and, I wanna say, three thousand. Because I remember two years, the year prior to that was one million two hundred and thirty thousand, so it roughly dropped some twenty-seven thousand for last year. But yeah, this year it's now up two hundred and fifty thousand plus.
Yeah.
Over the previous year.
And that's, and again, that's something we wanna post for the.
Yep.
For the residents to understand that, because that impacts our, obviously impacts our operation.
Sure, yes, that's, that two hundred and fifty thousand is directly passed through when the state comes down to step the tax rate. We have little to no control over that.
Yep.
Okay. Next item, Stratford Regional Planning Commission dues at five thousand five hundred ninety-one dollars.
Again, Madam Chair, it's more of a, from a, yeah, formality from a business perspective that we, if you agree that we recognize that invoice, it's, in recognizing the invoice, it's technically a contract, if you will, that we would have with Stratford Regional Planning for planning services. As I've said in the past, I believe we get more out of them, out of, for services than we give them in dollars and cents. You might notice tonight, Jen was in here this past week, but we've been able to get rid of a lot of the clutter in the paper that we used to have in this room. They had, they, Stratford County gave us this year as part of their service, someone who came in for, it was a fat week, it was like a week and a half, and they scanned everything that we laid out for them on the tables, and as a result, you know, plans, specs, old reports, whatever, and we've been able to clean up this room as a, as a result of that, and get rid of some of this paper and clutter that we've accumulated over the last twenty or thirty years. So, as I say, I think we get a, a big bang for our buck.
Dues are the same as this, this year, they didn't change.
Correct, yeah, they're, they're based upon population, because we didn't have a population shift, the dues didn't, didn't change at all. So they're, they're using the new two thousand and twenty census data and, how do you say it?
Yep.
There was a little C P I. increase to it, but other than that, it's essentially the same invoices last year.
Okay, we need a motion on that, or is that just?
It would be good to outside to carry that forward in our budget.
Yep, I will make a motion to carry forward the Stratford Regional Planning Commission membership.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the next item is capital improvement plan to review.
Do we have it?
I believe it was sent.
Trying to find it.
There was a two, because I think it was a little further back.
Yeah, it was a pretty blunt, blunt document.
C I P, two thousand and twenty-three, there it is. If you do a search, you'll be able to pull it up quicker.
Okay, what's the date on it? I mean, I have it, I just couldn't see.
Yeah, it's, I, I don't know, the report came up when I typed.
Because if I put C I P., I get a lot of.
Finally approved, ten thirteen, yeah.
Okay.
Ten thirteen was finally approved. Yeah, the junior under committee.
Is that when the email came?
The final, yeah, let me go back and make sure. Got it open, but let's see. It's on ten seventeen, Bruce.
Thank you. Too many emails. All right, here we go. So essentially, Bruce had put together his report, which is, was approved by the committee, and kind of explaining how we rank them and in order of importance, I guess, is, and then what is recommended.
Yeah, it's an eye chart. I says, and it's an eye chart. Yes.
Yeah, yeah, it's a, it's a straining eye chart. Yeah, I think the biggest take from it that, that I saw was, you know, where do we draw the line, I guess. In my world, we're looking for some guidance as to, and, and I'm not asking for approval tonight, but maybe some guidance to say which items, please proceed with drawing up a warrant article on, because I do need a little lead time for that. And then we could, you know, and then as part of that process, then weed out as we have a public hearing for warrant articles, one, what the dollar amount is, two, how we're gonna pay for it, be it, you know, taxes, bonding, unassigned fund balance, that sort of thing. So there is, in other words, I'm trying to express to the board that it's not a final decision tonight.
No.
It's more or less, I think, a year or two years ago, if I remember correctly, we just basically said, okay, item number X is where you drew the line, because it had equated to, let's say, five hundred thousand dollars worth of funding, and that's about what I'm looking for.
We have the joint meeting with the Budget Committee on the seventeenth.
Correct.
Where we'll be going through what we have for a budget, and we'll have just about everything but the insurance. My suggestion would be, we go and look through this, but that meeting's gonna help us understand where our budget's gonna be. Combine that with what we've gotta pay for the additional money for the county, and what, where we're gonna end up with the general fund is, I think, how we're gonna, we're gonna have to understand those two things before we.
Yeah, because.
Draw a line, because we've got other, we've got other warrant articles that are already just being discussed.
I mean, I'll speak for me, not for the board, but I, I will be surprised if we're able to hold the tax rate at the same dollar figure as last year, given the two hundred and fifty thousand that the county's asking for. You know, normally, let's, well, not normally, abnormally, if, from a grand balancing perspective, if we had another two hundred and fifty thousand in unassigned fund balance that you could throw at the taxes, you could offset that. But I'm not sure yet that we have that two hundred and fifty thousand to offset those taxes. I mean, we did get in additional funds for bridge maintenance, road maintenance, but those had a very specific stipulation in them that they could not be used to offset property taxes. But they could be, for instance, let's say, where we got another hundred thousand in road improvement money, you could say, okay, well, next year, well, then we won't ask for the voters to raise X fifty, we'll ask them to.
Lower it a month.
Lower, assert them up, you have that capability. But as far as finding two hundred and fifty thousand right now to say that we're gonna offset the ta, the county's increased assessment in an effort to keep the tax rate exactly the same, I'm not seeing that as being available.
This week alone, yep, with the finance, you know, got Brittany, because we've got the school and we've got the county tax, it's all gonna be paid. So that's over one point nine million dollars, gotta be paid by December fifteenth.
Yep.
And we don't have that in the general fund to cover both, or didn't, until I sat with her, because we also had the sewer bill, which was a hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars worth of charges in the month of October, and I got that transferred over to the revolving fund. So that helps offset some of it, but we really have to understand where we're at here in the next couple of weeks, I think, before we can say where we draw the line on this.
But I would ask that you give me some indication of some of them that you're interested in.
Yep.
So I don't have a typing frenzy at the middle, in the middle of the night, so.
So you're looking for that now, or you're looking for that in two weeks?
No, I'd be looking at it now to say, okay, for instance, just because it's only a five thousand dollar, it wasn't. If you were interested in having another boat ramp article, speak now. If you were interested in having another three fifty for the roads, or, you know, and, and there again, the number can change, that, that can be edited. It's just the wholesale, do you wanna support another three thousand, three hundred into the TASER account? Do you wanna support, and I'm not sure, because I haven't spoken to Pat, whether or not he would just wants another seventy-five thousand in, in the road, in, sorry, into the truck capital reserve fund? Or does he want to pull the trigger and try and get order for new trucks? I mean, that's, I guess, what I'm looking for, because to order, to draw up a warrant article, to order for trucks, now you could say to me, do both.
Yep.
And we'll pick which one, that's, that's good guidance, I'll take that, but to set, but yeah. And the other thing is, in the next two weeks, we're also gonna be setting the tax rate down around Thanksgiving time. We have to if we're gonna get the bills out in December.
Yep.
So that's why I say, I see it all coming together into the train station at the same time. Tell me, you want me to prepare for everybody arriving at the train station? I mean, I can do them all, or I can do.
Well, if we go by the list, you know, you've got, just starting the top, at the top of the list is the ambulance, but the two thousand and twenty-three projects in the middle cost is nothing yet because the earliest we could get it is two thousand and twenty-five. So that doesn't require a warrant article to move ahead at this point, I mean, with the cost. So, but you've got like the, the radio replacement, that was another one that we're looking at, we need to do something because there's federal grants involved, the potential. The plow trucks, we already talked about those, but we've got, doesn't have to necessarily be four, because, if you're looking.
Right, because that's just an editorial comment to go from four to three or four to.
I say, as of right now, start with the top eleven project.
Yep, and I, I don't disagree.
Which brings us down to two thousand and twenty-four, replacing tanker engine four.
Yep.
So from that one up, because the first one really isn't gonna be funded anyway, so really you're only doing ten. So I say, start there, and then we can adjust if we need to.
There's, there's a reason we got a committee to turn around and put the list together, so.
Mm-hmm.
Because we start there, and then what we have to adjust, we adjust.
Okay.
I agree with that.
Okay.
Yep. Said the video is not working. Pause for a moment. Back down to the, let's see.
Says there's seven concurrent video viewers.
End screen. And, so, we're still recording, so if it, go back, we'll be, stop. Let's restart. See if it comes back up.
Mm-hmm.
I asked Steve, and he worked on this the other day, because we've, we've had him streaming and they're not recording, they're not being uploaded when they're done.
Mm-hmm.
So.
And I did it on a software on the interway, too. I don't know if that changed things.
Send a message and see if it's working. Video's fine.
Okay.
Sure.
All right, we'll move on then, thank you. All right, so we're gonna move on to old business, first item is Head Start Building Purchase.
The, all the legal documents were sent to you, always copies of them. I received the one signed by Betsy Parker today, or they were in my bin this morning, I should say. I told John Gagner that he didn't need to attend tonight, and then I realized all of these need to be witnessed. So I think if in public you can take a vote to sign those, these documents individually, then, yes, to sign them and then swing by John's office, or tomorrow, we can bring them to the vote, you could sign them there from John. That way they can be, because they have to be notarized for us to record them.
Should be enough for us to do it in the morning.
Correct, yeah, see, you could do it in the morning. And I did notice, by the way, the, the meeting tomorrow, that, the vote tomorrow as a B O S. meeting, in case there's ever any.
Business to discuss.
If you had to have a business meeting to raise a hundred dollars to buy donuts, you could legally do it. Now, that's not true business, but it could be construed as true business. So anyhow, the four documents are, there's a notice of termination of lease. It's basically releasing Stratford County Community Action Committee of, or the Community Action Partnership of Stratford County. From that, as I say, that is signed by Betsy. There is a lease termination agreement where they give the wheres and the wherefores of why the lease is being terminated. Betsy has signed it, it does require it being witnessed. Then the third thing is a discharge of the mortgage deed, mortgage deed that was dated May thirty-first, two thousand and five. And again, that has to be witnessed, and those are the documents itself.
Okay.
Well, you wanna make it official, we make a motion to, to sign those tomorrow with the, at the school?
They, they could be signed at the school, or at any time, I think the motion, well, if I could suggest, I'll read a motion and then you can say so moved.
That's fine, yeah, because we've got four of them.
Board makes a motion to sign or approve the notice of termination of lease between the Town of Milton and the Stratford County Community Action Committee, Inc., also known as Community Action Partnership of Stratford County.
Motion, so moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion recommended to, for a lease termination agreement between the Town of Milton and Community Action. Community Action Partnership of Stratford County of formerly known as the Stratford County Community Action Committee, as the, uh, L C, um, the lease that was, uh, originally dated December tenth, two thousand four.
Motion so moved.
Second.
Oh, in favor?
Aye.
And discharge of mort- mortgage deed, uh, for value received to the Town of Milton, uh, holder of mortgage from Stratford County Community Action, originally dated May thirty-one, two thousand five.
Motion so moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
All right, you do talk.
Right, next item we have here is We Care Food Pantry.
Yes. They came in this afternoon, literally at four, four thirty, with, um, they're, they do keep records. They have to report to the U S Department, uh, of food, um, because they're using, getting federal assistance. And those are the monthly and annual, uh, list by community who they actually serve. Um, I had gone down and seen them the last week of, uh, October. Um, they said they'd have them for us before the meeting, if they had come in earlier, I would have, uh, if you well scanned and distributed it. But that's the information that the board was looking at, uh, if you want some time to look at it, I don't see an issue postponing, uh, a, a date and an amount, uh, for a future meeting.
Now, these, these look like they're copies.
Yeah, those were his, him printing out his reports.
Oh, yeah, that's actually for us to.
Are there extra ones?
Yeah, it looks like he's got multiple copies.
Okay.
No, they're different timeframes.
Mm-hmm.
That's what it is. They're different timeframes. That one's October, this is September, so.
Yeah.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah. Just looked like it was the same thing till I saw the numbers were different.
Mm-hmm.
And you can see they have a pretty wide, uh, range of, or area that they, uh, provide to the community, but they do, uh, keep track of who that is.
From this, it looks like Milton's getting about twenty percent of what they're doing.
For that particular month.
Yeah. Seven sixty-seven to eleven, this one, this one's more, I think it's more like thirty percent, so it was twenty to thirty percent in those months. Yeah, biggest one is. Twenty-six. Yeah. But it does say what the percentage is. Yeah, between twenty, between twenty-two and twen- and thirty percent. I'd like to make a suggestion that we talk about this when I bring up the budget at all, so I can show where we're at.
Okay.
Does it work?
It's fine with me.
Okay. I don't, I don't think we're in bad shape, but just making sure we, we know where we're at.
All right, we'll move on to the, uh, communications from town administrator.
So the town received.
Or is this communicated since we see, sorry?
Yeah, let's look at, the town received, uh, last week a shoreland per- permit for, for the proposed boat ramp replacement. It was dated the nineteenth, uh, for those interested in the boat ramp replacement process, uh, there's, there were two permits that were required. One is from shore land, and, and that is everything above the water, and the other one is the wetlands permit, and that is everything below the water. And, um, we're still waiting for the wetlands permit to come back as approved, or at least we're, we're making progress. Uh, the second thing that, uh, got sent along and I forward to the board is, the Three Ponds Protective Association conducted a online survey to let folks tell them what they thought about the bridge replacement project that's underway. Uh, the, their email said that it's on their website and could be accessed at threeponds.net backslash survey dash report backslash. Um, again, um, it's more informational, uh, purposes. I did, uh, look at it and see some of the comments, and, um, the bulk were, you know, hey, let me be able to get my boat with my bimini top underneath like we did before. Um, and yes, there was some comment about how, um, a- as the email stated, the, when the survey was prepared, uh, a number of people were under the impression that the bridge had to be built up a number of feet, about five.
Mm.
To accomplish that, they didn't realize that the information that the state had up to that date, any photos that were supplied showed the water under the bridge basically at flood stage. So it led everyone in Concord at D O T to believe that to accomplish getting a boat underneath that bridge, the bridge was physically gonna have to be elevated. Uh, they're no longer of that opinion, cause they now realize that the normal water level is five feet lower than the photos, so. That's, uh, I expressed to them that I would bring it up as, that the board did receive it as a communication, and then it's available if people wanna go on the Three Ponds Protective Association website and see what the comments were. I was surprised they got like a hundred and twenty-five comments or something, so.
It's seventy-eight percent, said rebuild.
Yeah, so, and, um, there was also a third communication that came in, and it was from the New Hampshire Municipal Association, and basically it had to do with the disposition of, um, legal opinions. Meaning that they typically get asked, uh, to prepare legal opinions. They can be from one or more communities, and when they go out, they are somewhat generic in nature. Uh, meaning that it, um, set up to address a limited question or a limited scope of question. And that apparently some people feel that the New Hampshire Municipal Association, at least this is the way I interpreted their email, feel that those comments or decisions or answers that come down from them are the law, gospel, and they're not. They, and that we should be careful how we rely on those, how we disseminate the information that they send out, um, et cetera. And that's basically the
Just a.
summary of their comment, of their, uh, actual, uh, communication to the town.
Okay.
Okay.
That's it.
Get myself back here. All right, moving on to other businesses, any other business that may come before the board? Okay, so we have approval of minutes, non-public minutes of October seventeenth, twenty twenty-two.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
On the public one, there's, um, one thing that's misleading under the budget review, says the proposed budget, and this is on page before I make a motion.
Mm-hmm.
On page four, and it won't affect what we sign. At the time, I know, the, it says the proposed budget, the proposed budget by the BOS lowers this, uh, which is lowers the proposed budget from the, um, department heads by thirty-nine thousand. No, it was below the default budget, not below, so we just need to capture that, and it just, it says.
Okay.
That the proposed budget lowers, I mean, puts the budget below the default budget. Because then at the time of that, it was only a one point four six percent variance, which is fine, but it wasn't below the department head one. So I'd make a motion to approve the, the minutes with that adjustment.
The public minutes.
The public minutes, yes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll mark that for you.
Okay. I want you to finish signing this one.
Yep.
Good job.
Before I forget.
Well, the two documents intertwined.
This is true.
Like I would.
Yeah, easy though, though.
Yeah, you just make that, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, you could cross it out, right?
Mm-hmm.
Cause those will get scanned and posted.
Yep.
And let's maybe take the opportunity to point out that the number, I get, we get frequent questions, why don't we post these public minutes online in their draft form, and this is one of the reasons why we don't.
Do you wanna initial it, and we can all initial that too?
Yep.
Just so that there's.
Because the one word, be it budget versus a draft or default budget, have two different meanings.
Mm-hmm.
And it can be, um, quickly, if you will, misinterpreted, so that's the reason why I'm not in the habit of posting.
Just showing the change, so.
Yeah, before you.
Draft public meetings, minutes before the board has had the opportunity to, uh.
Yeah, and in all honesty, so the public understands, because we had a proposed budget of over, of over five million dollars, it was five million fifty-three thousand. If it only lowered by thirty-nine, would still be over five million.
Mm-hmm.
But we're at four point eight, so that's two hundred thousand, all the variation in that, little bit, so. Anyways, yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Oh, okay.
Right, uh, we.
Okay, we are moving on to, oh, public minutes pertaining to topics previously discussed.
Okay.
Have any other public comments?
Yeah.
Mm, okay. And expenditure report or budgets, is that where you wanted to discuss them?
Yep. I wanted to, yeah, let me bring up the, well, uh, yeah, I did send it to you guys, but yeah, just reopen, and then close that one. All right, I got the expenditure information from Brittany early, so I started going through it, and we've been, in the previous meeting, I had brought up that we got below the percentage of where we were in the year in our total expenditures.
Mm-hmm.
But when I saw an expenditure of a hundred and twenty-five thousand plus for sewer, it was like.
The liner.
That was, yeah, for the liner itself, I, I called her to question it, because we had already talked in previous meetings about making sure it came out of the revolving fund, so.
Correct.
Um, we got that, plus we got the notification of the county tax bill, so when I heard the, when I heard about the county tax bill, knowing the schools do, and then that, I went, you better come up with some money quickly, so. So I made a phone call, got, got with Brittany the other day, and we went through, she made the adjustments, she's gonna send that back out to me later this week. Um, even with that noted, because the sewer, as we've talked about before, um, was way over, was two hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars, is projected to be two hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars over, but again, for the public that's only hearing this and not seeing the numbers, that does get offset by their revolving, their revolving fund, and part of their capital reserve fund too, for some of these repairs, so we're still under. Even with the a- added expense there, we're, we were at eighty-two point two five percent expended with eighty-three point three percent of the year completed. Take those numbers out, and we're closer to seventy-five percent expended. So with that in mind, the reason I wanted to bring that up is I wouldn't like to make the motion to go forward with the five thousand dollars for the We Care Food Pantry, cause I think it's critical to the community to help.
Okay.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye. Yep.
Okay.
So there will be more to follow, um, the proposed budget's next, cause I don't wanna, I sent, I sent the latest update out, um, to you guys, so that, and there are no other changes between now and the seventeenth, uh, when we meet, um. I did have some notes in there off to the side, I, what I'll do is I'll send a summary out. We are still under the default with adjustments that have been made so far. What we're gonna need, and I heard, two things, I heard from you about the insurance going up to a certain number. Brittany says she heard it was going up even more than what was projected. That's still gonna be matched in the default, but what it does is that raises our variance to last year's budget, obviously.
Mm-hmm.
So we'll need to know what those numbers are.
Okay.
But right now, with all the adjustments before we make those, we're still, we're only at one point eight four percent over last year's budget, which can, compared to what we're hearing elsewhere, is pretty amazing, because the county went up over eleven percent. And we're keeping it under two at this point, now we haven't heard from the school yet. We meet with the school, the budget committee meets with the school the end of the month, on the twenty-ninth, for the first phase, and heard that they were already at about, this year, which is good, you're familiar with this.
Mm-hmm.
Chasing in the past, I guess when they told, talked to us two weeks ago, they were at ninety-five percent complete for presenting to us on the twenty-ninth, so.
Okay.
So we'll know more when that comes up, that'll be the week after our, week and a half after our meeting. So right now, we're, we're holding our own, we may still have a few minor adjustments, but I think we need to, we need to determine what the final adjustments are gonna be with insurances and that.
Okay.
I did make, I did make the, uh, adjustments to u- the town administrator contract services to include the groundwater testing, uh, at eighteen thousand, is what we roughly, what we heard.
Mm-hmm.
So that included adding that in.
Okay.
So we're still under the two percent, so, not doing too bad.
Oh, great. Mm-hmm.
Yep, but like I said, I'll forward a summary to everybody.
Okay.
Um, and we do still need to find out what it's gonna be for the Amazon Prime business account. I'll talk with, um, I'll talk with you and I'll talk with Brittany.
Mm-hmm.
Um, about setting that up as opposed to having individual accounts, this way it's one business account and up to ten users.
Okay.
So that gives everybody an opportunity in town to utilize that without costing us a hundred and fifty dollars or more for each one of the, each one of the accounts.
Okay.
Okay. That's all I got at this point.
I'm gonna get the movie package in my office.
It's, it's possible, but it only has one show, and it's all about taxes, so it doesn't really, doesn't do you any good these days.
Okay.
So I also spoke with Brittany about, um, the, having some type of report that merges the items that have been approved for, um, you know, warrant articles.
Mm-hmm.
And somehow having like a time lapse and with the capital improvement, uh, capital reserve fund and seeing where they are. I don't think we have something that we can see all at once.
No, that's why, if you noticed, I sent, I had her send out the revenue report.
Right.
I had her send out the year-to-date detailed report, and I had her send out the MS nine, which gives us the capital reserve fund. I'm gonna sit with her, because there are a couple of reports, but they're not all in one, but if we can get it.
Right.
So we get it all at one time, that's why I had her send those. Actually, she was supposed to send two, but she sent the MS nine twice instead of two different reports.
Mm-hmm.
One was supposed to be for the revolving fund.
That would help, be very helpful for the, you know, in long term, but also for the capital improvement committee to see.
Yeah.
Okay.
Mm-hmm, to understand where we're at.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, no, that's a big, big thing, that's why I said we can't vote until we know either, so.
Right. Right.
Gotcha.
Yep.
Thank you. Okay, so, um, town administrator?
Uh, I was away, uh, last week, so, other than what I've told you already. That's all my report. Uh, just to remind the board, the next, our next board meeting will be November twenty-first, although we are meeting on the seventeenth.
Yep.
And we're down as having a meeting tomorrow, but it's really to be at the election.
Yep.
Okay. All right, next item is, uh, selectmen comments. Do we have any comments, Matt?
Nope, I'm good.
No?
Yeah, I already provided it. We're gonna be meeting, uh, the joint meeting with the board of, with the budget committee for the budget will be on the seventeenth. So, that'll be here, so.
Right, I just wanted to mention that, um, I've been meeting with the, um, new association called the Milton Business Association. Uh, we're meeting on, um, I think like every other week type of, uh, schedule, just to kind of pull things together from, uh, businesses that are interested in, um, working together, and, um, it's very encouraging. So, I encourage other businesses in Milton, um, to join us. I think our next meeting is the fif- the next Tuesday, I think.
Next Tuesday.
I meant to write that down. Yeah, the fifteenth, I think it's, um, nine o'clock at Natasha's.
Yep.
So, um, this is for, um, businesses that are in Milton who are interested in, uh, working, uh, in, uh, working with other businesses, but also, um, reaching out to communities for different events, so. All right.
With that, I'll make a mo- I'll make a motion to adjourn from the public meeting and enter into non-public.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good.
So, the, the first item under non-public would be the fire department, uh, second.